Good evening. This is Mayor Mark Northrup. I'd like to call to order the Hudsonville City Commission of October 12th, 2021. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Call the roll, please, Clerk.
Commissioner Bullheys?
Here.
Branson?
Here.
Debray?
Here.
Larrar?
Here.
Raderink?
Here.
Mayor Northrup?
Here. Now there will be a moment of silence as led by Commissioner Dan Bullheys.
Everyone bow their heads, please. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather and make the decisions that we make for this great city of Hudsonville. We ask for your blessing upon those decisions that we make. We ask that you watch over our police, fire, and military personnel as they protect this great country that we live in. We ask for your continued blessings on this country as we continue to move forward in these uncertain times. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Dan. Now is the time for public comments. If there are people in the audience that choose to address the City Commission, you're welcome to it. I believe we have one resident, Dave Nitre, who is also on the Planning Commission and on the...
Border Review.
Border Review.
Thank you, everyone. I am a resident here in the city. And I was here to just be short and brief and let you folks know that I entered the application process for the open seat for Ward Two. And I am eager to go through that process and would love to join you folks. So I'm here tonight to observe. I'm just grateful for the way you serve our town. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave. I'm sure we'll be talking. Anybody else? Hearing and sing none will move on to the consent agenda items. There are six. There are three minutes of City Commission, work session dated September 14th, regular session dated September 14th, and a work session dated September 28th. Are there any changes? And then there's three more. The minutes of the DDA dated July 27th, dated the September 1st, and also the Planning Commission dated September 15th. Are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The minutes carry. Moving on to new business, public safety. September Public Safety, statistical reports. Chief, you're up. Chief Moore?
Thank you and good evening. You had my report there. It was just another typical month for us, 44 calls. Nothing too unusual in those calls. Thirty-one of them were medical. You have my written report as well. Just note on the written report that our chief's meeting, Ottawa County Chief's meeting last month was what we call our legislative dinner. You have the state and federal folks come in and we give them a meal and kind of talk to them about stuff that's coming up. And they tell us how much money we're not going to get. So that's kind of the way that goes. We did have Kevin Schelmeyer, our first state Fire Marshal there, which was the first time he came to a meeting. And he kind of got shot down a little bit on this one bill that he's proposing that all officers of all fire departments, full-time and part-paid, do a continuing ed class over a period of years to accumulate like 30 to 50 credits or something. And that was not too well received because we're busy enough as far as part-paid is concerned. Full-time, they can do that while they're on the job. We cannot. We have to work during the day and do this at night. We have enough nights going as it is. So we weren't too much in favor of that, so we'll see where that goes in the future here. At least he knows how we feel about it. Had our ladders tested. Everything passed there. And the FEMA grant that about eight departments went in on to get new SCBA, came back with just a partial amount of money. And that money was only for what we call RIP PACs, which is for Rapid Intervention. Two-in, two-out type of thing. One PAC for each of the eight departments. And then they approved extra masks for SCBA, but they didn't approve the PACs, which doesn't make a lot of sense because the new masks are not going to fit the old PACs. So the eight departments, we got together and said, we'll just decline it. So it doesn't do us any good to go partial on something like that. That was kind of a disappointing thing. We really thought that we had a good shot at making that grant. That grant for the eight departments did total 1.4 million. But I don't know if that had something to do with it or not, but we'll see what we're going to do in the future here. That's about it. Any questions at all or comments?
Can I just add on to that? I kind of talked to Chief about what's the contingency plan? That was of that $8 million grant. We had about, what is it, 150,000 was going to be our portion, Chief, somewhere in that category.
If we got the whole thing, yes.
If we got the whole thing. So the grant was an award, but that doesn't negate the need for the equipment that he has. So we're going to have to try to find the money for that in next year's budget somewhere because it is a critical piece of equipment that his people need. It's really disappointing that we didn't get the grant. But this is a very important item that we can't discount. So we're going to put this into the CIP for next year and find the money to make it happen. A lot of the other departments are just doing the same probably this year.
Right. There was three departments that said, well, we've got the money. We're just going to buy it anyway. But the other five says, we've got to find a different way. They just don't have the money to pull out.
What's the cost of a full SCBA with mask?
150,000 right now.
For how many?
Pardon?
For how many?
For 20.
Oh.
20.
The 5,000 apiece.
About, yeah. And then there's a few spare bottles in there, too. That cost is going to go up from what I understand in February. Everything else goes up, of course. So we're going to be between 150 and maybe 180 next year. But we can put in for the whole amount and we can still try for FEMA grant again next year, but we'll probably just go it alone instead of, you know, all the other requirements. We'll see what we do.
Very good. Any other questions for the Chief?
Chief, do you think that bill that he was going to require with the continuing ed, do you think he has support for that or not? I mean, otherwise, you shouldn't be shy about talking to Roger Victory about that.
Yeah.
If you have concerns, because I'm sure some of your other fellow chiefs have the same concern with part-time.
Or they come up the money to pay you the wage, the hourly to go there.
Right. Some of that stuff was brought up and Roger Victory's representative was at this dinner.
Oh, good.
They were aware of it. So was, who was the other guy?
Brad Slaw.
Yes, he was there, but I was thinking of the other one.
Luke, Mayorman?
He was there.
Okay, so they heard the concerns?
The one that Mr. Dickdickow represents.
Oh, that'd be Senator Peters, yeah.
Yes. He was there representing him. So... And they were busy taking notes is what we want, so they're going to take all this in and take it back.
But keep us dialed in on that, would you?
I would assume pay is only half, I thought. It's just the time also.
I'm sorry?
I assume pay is only half the issue. The other half is you just don't have the time.
Well, it is. I mean, you know, you work full-time. I don't necessarily, but our other three officers do. And we have meetings twice a month, plus they have a training thing that they are in on, on meetings. And, you know, I'm here tonight and the next chief will probably be here tonight who has a full-time job. So, you know, time is valuable and everybody wants to be home with their families once in a while.
It's easy to make the criteria and not realize the implications to people. And if they come up the money, if they came up with a certain amount of money to pay the wage or the overtime, you know, then that sweetens it, but they're... They never think that way.
Well, again, the state Fire Marshal, he was full-time for Grand Rapids before he got this position. So he's of the full-time mentality and unfortunately, when they make rules and stuff like that, that's the direction they go. But I guess we could go full-time here. Just threw that out.
Well, Chief, while I got you here, do you want to go ahead and speak to us briefly on the pagers right now?
I can.
Yeah, why don't you?
This is just a continuation of a three-year process. They're dual-band, 800 and VHS pagers, which takes the place of these little minuters. We've gotten them the last two years. I think we bought seven or eight in the last couple of years. This year, we're going for five. This will end that. Everybody will have a new pager at this point.
Was this in the CIP?
No.
It was in the budget? In the budget. It was in the budget. However, I did need to ask you, I think you had eight in the budget this year and you're only requiring...
Could be.
Okay. You just need the five.
We didn't need that many, so...
And are these shared? Are they each, each officer has their own?
Each firefighter has their own. Everybody has one.
Any questions for the Chief on this? Very good. Thank you, Chief.
Yep, thank you.
Sergeant Stanga?
Do you want to...
We'll do the motion after this.
Okay. That's the order. Gotcha. Everybody good on coffee or?
Donuts?
Stay close.
Donuts.
It was a good month. Our numbers are pre-COVID again. We'll see how long that lasts. We were busy with lots of crimes that normally don't happen too often here. We've had several stolen cars, motorcycles. We had some break-ins. We have identified suspects on all of them and recovered all of our stolen vehicles as well. We had some motorcycles stolen from the Harley-Davidson dealership that were inside. We recovered one of those and the other one is outstanding and possibly in parts, but we know who did it. So it's been, it's been busy. School has started as of September as well and we were really busy with that. Between politics, masks, all that kind of stuff's kept us pretty busy. And now we're doing all the lockdown drills, which we do yearly with them, three times a year at least. Evacuation drills at all the elementary schools. So definitely lots, lots going on. Traffic-wise, Chicago Drive and 32nd are both very busy roads right now. See, a lot of people are getting off before they get to, or getting off at 32nd, taking Chicago Drive and take Chicago Drive to Zeeland because of all the construction that's been happening. And Chicago Drive from Genesund to Zeeland is extremely busy both ways. So we'll see how long that lasts with construction up on the highway. 265 calls, 139 traffic stops, and 60 tickets were written. So they're doing their fair work, so I appreciate it. Any questions at all?
Have you heard how long that highway construction's supposed to go?
You know, I haven't been, kept in the loop on that one because it doesn't involve the city, so I don't know.
I didn't know if your fellow officers at the county heard or not.
No, I haven't. I heard.
Okay.
And there was somebody killed on 64th and Chicago Drive this morning?
Out from Chicago Drive. Yeah, there was.
Deer went through the car.
Through and through, yes. So then he went out the road. So it's not too often you have a car deer where the driver is vitally. So the deer was as well, so, yeah. It's very unfortunate.
On the break-ins, were these cars unlocked or is there any warning? They're always unlocked, so...
And Georgetown and Jameson have gotten even worse than we have. It's a lot of people coming with rental cars. They rent cars in somebody else's name and they come into our area, hit our neighborhoods, find the open doors and steal the cars. Day or two later, we find them abandoned in Grand Rapids or surrounding areas.
We used the PSA that the Sheriff's Department put out in Georgetown, keep your cars locked. We copied that and pasted it on our Facebook page for our residents, too, so...
So they're keeping their keys in the car then, too?
Yeah. And usually there's a, I think a few of them had their handguns in there, too, so not too responsible, but it's out there and it's happening. Just for you guys' sake as well, make sure you lock your doors, so...
Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you.
Dave, good to see you tonight.
All right, so for September, first of all, we didn't have a staff meeting. Our meetings are first Monday of the month. And given the choice, the team chose not to spend the holiday with me. I'm still stunned, but... So, and we didn't really need them because of what was coming up. We were really already prepared for it. Thing I wanted to highlight really is Farm Girl Flea Market. So essentially, we found very little need for traffic services, just a little bit here and there. So, and that was the same thing in the spring and it was also the same way at the end of 2019. So we're looking at next year, we will most likely switch our model there. Instead of deploying a full team, we'll just have a few people on call. And somebody like myself or JJ will every now and then just take a rundown grant and see if there's any need. And if so, we'll call people out. That will, you know, allow people to kind of free up some of their time and it'll reduce the charge to pinning Farm Girl. And if that doesn't work out, we go back to a full traffic detail. Any questions or comments?
Commissioners? Hearing none. Thank you, Dave. Keep up the good work. Moving on to item number nine, the purchase of the pagers. Is there a motion?
There's a motion right now here, isn't there? I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the five dual-band pagers for the cost of $3,527.50.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any other questions or discussion from the Commission? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Clerk.
Commissioner Debray?
Yes.
Larrar?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Raderink?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Purchase the pagers. Thank you. Moving on to finance. City Treasurer?
Good evening. So we will be reviewing the general fund financial information for the month of August. We will start with just the summary. So out of our budget, we have received already 68.68% and we have expensed 33.92%. In the next report, we received just above $2 million in the month of August and 1.8 of it was for property taxes. It's our biggest month just because that's when some of our property taxes are due. That brings us to the revenue to date of $2.8 million. And then for the expenditure summary, we expensed $181,883, bringing our year-to-date to 1.5 million. And then I just kind of wanted to remind everybody that that number seems high already so early on, but 1.14 of that was inter-fund transfers from the general fund out to the other funds.
Does that include the ARPA money?
No, no. So that's just our budgeted transfers to like the parks, fund, to library, which are the bigger ones. And then we'll move on to the investment report for the month of August. In green, I highlighted the new CDs we purchased. So you can see we purchased a new CD with like Michigan Credit Union at 0.9%. One with First National Bank of America at 1.05% and then a Sally Mae at 0.7%. And then the ones highlighted in orange are the ones that came due. So, you know, we lost some at 1.5%, but it's just the rate environment we're in right now. Overall, that brings our average rate of investments to 1.35%. And that means we brought in a little bit over $5,000 in investment revenue. Any questions on that? I just wanted to make a comment. So we did get the ARPA money. Right now, it's not in this report because we did not receive it in August. We got it in September. But what we did is we just put it in a money market savings. It's not earning a ton of money, interest on it. It's 0.15%, but at least it's set up separately right now in a separate account until we strategically decide how we're going to use it.
What's the timeframe again that we have to use that money?
2024, so we have some years to decide.
Bail out Terror Square.
And we just received half of it. The other half will come next year.
Correct.
And then the three-year window starts again for that half?
Nope. No. So it just gives you, they have said in some of my finance meetings that they might extend it just because they have not came out with the final rule on everything we can use it on and they're still working on FAQs. So they might extend it, but for now, 2024, we just have to have it assigned to a purpose. And then we still have till 2026 after that to actually spend it.
So the plan right now, and Kayla and I have been discussing this, is to formulate some type of a brief presentation on the cans and cans with the ARPA money for you guys to listen to and then have a discussion among this body on prioritization of projects and uses of that fund. So Kayla's working on that right now and then the goal would be to tie that discussion into the strategic plan discussion that we have later in December. If that makes sense to everybody. Okay. That's, everyone's advice is talk to, talk about this collectively because there's a lot of different things that, opportunities that could be looked at and it's important that everyone's on the same page.
Right. And they always, they've been advising us to not rush and spend the money because the state does have a lot of extra funds that they could be making grant programs for. That could also, we could use some of this money for grant matching. So, you know, they're kind of saying, you know, take your time, make your decision strategically. Don't rush because there's more money out there that could also help with whatever purpose we decide to designate it to.
Any other questions for the Treasurer? Discussion? Thank you, Kayla. Moving on to payment of the bills. Item number 11. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to confirm the payment of the bills in the amount of $392,824.05. To confirm payment of bills paid between meetings and reviewed by the Finance Committee.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Clerk.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Debray?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Larrar?
Yes.
Raderink?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Pay the bills. Moving on to ACH funds distribution. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to confirm the funds distributed via automated clearinghouse in the amount of $366,725.06, which were distributed between meetings and reviewed by the City Manager.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the ACH funds distribution? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Clerk.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Debray?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Larrar?
Yes.
Raderink?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Distribute the funds. Moving on to item number 13, Terror Square rental rate adjustments. Is there a motion?
She's probably waiting for the agenda to get up there.
I'll make a motion to authorize the adoption of the attached Terror Square event and market space rental rates as drafted and effective immediately.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Patrick, do you have any comments on this?
Yeah. I know they've been working on this quite a while and our Terror Square board rep is not here tonight.
Right. So Jill, can you pull up that last spreadsheet real quick? This spreadsheet kind of tells the story of the why. What I asked Terry to do is kind of go back and look at our actual revenues and expenses at Terror Square over the last few years. And obviously, the prior year was an anomaly with COVID because we just didn't have the revenues coming in. But if you look back to 1920 and then what we're budgeting this year for 2122, you can see in the very bottom line a difference of a negative 42,000 on one year and 44,000. So the bottom line is that Terror Square is not sustainable under the current funding model. And there's not, we looked at operational costs where those could be cut or reduced and there just wasn't a lot of room because a lot of those are set expenses. So we knew we had a top line problem to address and that was on the revenue side. So, and really, our primary revenue source for Terror Square is the event rental space. We don't balance the books on the farmer's market vendor fees and we don't balance them on the co-work space, which are pretty competitive. We are, however, in talking with other organizations, considered to be pretty affordable when it comes to the event space. So we knew that there was a room for some increases there. So we used this model and basically had Terry look at how many average rentals we're doing. What's the capacity to rent it out over the course of the year? And work backwards through that equation to come up with a rental fee that made the numbers work. And that other page that shows those differences gets us to that point where for a five-hour rental of all-event space on a Friday or Saturday night, we're currently charging $1,260. If we increase that to $1,500, which is not a significant increase and it's still at the bottom end of the market rate for a venue like this, we're going to put ourselves into the positive at the end of the year with our budget. So that's the proposal. That's always been the goal of Terror Square is to be a self-sustaining entity. And this would become effective immediately. Anyone that's booked out already would enjoy the current rates, but any new calls that come in from this day forward would be under this new rate structure.
You don't think it will impact rentals?
We don't. And like I said, I mean, we never has, we've increased prices at Terror quite a bit and it's never been balked at. And if a renter is coming to us as a possible location for, or venue for their wedding, for example, you can bet they're checking prices at other venues and we're still in the very affordable category.
I have a speculative question. Maybe you know this, maybe you don't. If all cylinders were running with Terror Square, what would, what's the projected income revenue per year?
Well, that's kind of the model that I had. If you go back to that last screen, that far-right column shows the projected revenue with the increases that we're adopting tonight for that current year as 263,000. So this will effectively bump up your revenues another 63,000 a year. And that is a very conservative estimate because Terry's working on also booking out daytime rentals for a lot of corporate events and things like that. Those aren't even really figured in here yet, at least not at a very high level. So there is capacity to rent it more, but this is based on what we're renting it right now on average. And it gets us to the 263 mark.
So if it goes well, we'll make 9,000 over the course of the year?
Yes. That's a, and all, in, like our budget always, rarely do we expend 100% of our budgeted expenses. And I also assumed a 4% increase on those expenses for inflation. So I think that that difference is going to be much higher than 8,000.
So we really couldn't raise the rates enough to make up what we lost over the last three years?
No. This is just going forward.
It would take way too long.
Yeah, yeah. But the goal there, like our goal here, is to build a fund balance for Terror Square so that if they have maintenance items, you know, rooftop unit goes out or they need something, that there's money in that fund to pay for.
Moving forward.
Yes.
Okay.
And what you're adopting tonight, I don't know if you noticed, has 5% increases the following year and then another 5% increase the following year after that to keep up with inflation.
On the expense side?
On the rental. Go back one screen.
Did we build in any?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go back to the memo. There you go. Yep, right there. So she, you can see 2022 and then proposed 2023, which has a 5% increase off of what we're approving tonight. And then 2024, which has another 5% increase.
Did we apply any increases to expenses, our expenses, possibility of those going up as well?
Yeah, that was the one I just showed you. That last column had a 4% assumption for increase.
I overlooked that.
Yeah. So it's, it's a, it's a guess, right? I mean, but we're using it off of...
Budgets, all right.
Yeah, we're using it based off of, Terry did a lot of, you know, averaging of, you know, she knows down to the number of five-hour blocks that we're renting on average throughout the year. And she is doing a really good job of selling and upselling those five-hour blocks to turn into 10-hour blocks for a wedding, which doubles the revenue for that night.
Any other questions for Patrick on the motion?
I will add that this is for non-resident rental rate, which is a primary rental, renter.
They are. All residents get a 25% discount.
If you are a resident, which is a relatively small minority, I have discovered, they do get a 25% discount. But so everybody understands this is the non-resident rate. And we're not going out and advertising the resident discount because it just creates confusion in the market.
And we're not going out and advertising the resident discount, because it just creates confusion in the market.
It creates, um-
Angst, or?
It creates a, a desire for the renter to try to find somebody that lives in the city that can rent it for him. So, we just advertise that this is the rate, and if, if we find out that they're a resident, um, they say, by the way, you get a discount.
Very good. There's a motion on the table. Roll call, please, clerk.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Larrar?
Yes.
Bullheis?
Yes.
Uh, DeVry?
Yes.
Raderink?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Motion carries. Patrick, make sure you thank Terry and your staff for their due diligence and attention to detail on this, uh, motion.
We'll do that.
Moving on to the next item, which would be the adjournment, but before I ask for the adjournment, let's just go down the dais, and I'll start with Tobin.
I want to add one more thing to that, with Terry and Terror Square. She did an online walkthrough. Have you seen that?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody?
The video?
Yeah, I thought that was really cool.
That's on?
On the website.
On our website? On the Terror Square website. It's a virtual tour.
Yeah, I've been talking to her. She booked a couple, um, events just from that, without meeting the people and doing a physical walkthrough.
Yeah, I think she said she had someone from Chicago.
Really?
From out of state that rented it based off of that.
I thought that was a really neat idea. She has, she's doing a good job there.
I'll pass that on. Thanks.
Can you put that in our social media pages, too, maybe?
It is, it has been, yeah, several times. Yep, we can do it again, though.
Thanks for that, uh, update. Anything else?
Nothing.
Phil?
Uh, last meeting, you made some, some comment about retired and unemployed people up here.
I would never do such a thing.
So, I am not unemployed anymore. I am employed.
And how is the new?
I started my career as a public works employee. I am back in the public works realm for Holland, Port of Public Works, and so far, so good. It's very exciting. Lots of good things going on.
Any big projects you've been tasked with yet, or?
The old energy plant on Lake McAtella.
Dismantling it?
To be determined. That's, that's, yeah, that's a huge public input thing with a lot of different people having a place at the table, including the city and others. So, that's one of the things that may come in my court, but.
So, you'll be holding public hearings for Holland?
What's a lakefront?
I'll be involved a little bit. But, um, yeah, just lots of cool stuff going on, lots of really nice people I've got to meet over there. So, I am employed again, but I just wanted to say, too, I miss Greg. The man is a voice of reason and sanity and calm and measured, and the world could use more people like Greg Stigman right now.
Take note, son. Anything else, Phil?
Yep.
Uh, we had a, held our urban heyday this last weekend. It was, by all measure, a very successful community event. I think crowds were down, um, a little bit this year, um, due to, really unknown reasons. I, I think, uh, the weather may have scared some people off in the morning. It was kind of foggy, but, uh, for Lauren's first go at it, and Claire, who was still drinking from a fire hose, uh, when she, uh, got here two weeks ago, they did a great job. And I just want to thank them. I want to thank, uh, Dave and Dick and, and all the folks that helped out on the, uh, volunteer and public safety side of things, and, and also, uh, Jill, you were there volunteering as well. So, really appreciate all the hands on deck. Um, just a reminder on the process and timeline for the nomination of, uh, the new commissioner, or the appointment of the new commissioner. October 20th is when the deadline is for the applications. Uh, we did put a article out in the newsletter, which hopefully should be hitting mailboxes this week. I don't know if you guys have heard, but I, I know it's to the printer. Um, and then I will likely be calling that nomination commish, committee of Mayor Northrup, Commissioner Branson, and Commissioner DeVry to set up a meeting, to go through those. Um, and then the plan is to have a special meeting on October 26th, so two weeks from tonight, uh, to have that here and do the process of interviewing or, and/or, um, appointment.
Very good.
That, that ring true with what we talked about? Okay.
That will agree then. Do you want to give us update on the co-op or the house move?
House move is underway. Uh, I think they were digging the hole today. Um, uh, that should be, um, hopefully within the next week or two, pretty well set. Um, then, of course, we got to do, um, uh, the backfill, the grading, the utility hookups, and, um, you know, our goal is to obviously get that back on the market for sale as soon as possible. Um, so we're working diligently on that.
Do we have a broker for that, or?
Not yet. No, we can talk about that a little bit further. Um, and then the, uh, co-op property, we are working actively. Our attorney is working on putting together a purchase agreement on that, um, working out the details of the lease agreement, because the co-op does plan to continue to, um, uh, occupy that through at least March or the end of March. So, she's working diligently on putting those terms together, and, um, if all goes well, we'll have that agreement in place and ready for you guys to, uh, sign or, uh, approve at your next regular meeting in November.
Very good. Thank you, Patrick. Moving on to Larry.
Just like to echo what Phil said, and, and I know he's not here, but express appreciation for Greg's service and the time he spent, and it is unfortunate that he's had to leave the city.
Dan?
Echo that sentiment, but also, you know, this guy sitting here next to me has, uh, served on this commission for about 28 years. This is his last official meeting, and, uh, he will be missed as well. Thank you for your service.
We get to bless you next month.
A lot of years, a lot of labor, a lot of growth. You can take credit for a lot of it, Gary, and we're all in honor.
Do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I thank all of you for the opportunity of working with you. I want to, it's been an honor to represent Board One all these years, and be involved in the planning commissions since 1979, and watching all the things that have transpired in all those years. And I think the biggest joys that I had through the years is not the laborious type of thing that you do in the planning commission, when you approve somebody's outbuilding or something like that. It was when you make a, um, a plant, master plans and goals, like for the downtown or whatever you, you're making a goal. And then so many people leave so quickly after you make a goal. They never stay long enough to see the goal reach fruition. And to me, that was the biggest joy, when you had a goal as a city, and then you attained it. That, that brought great satisfaction to me and was happy to be a part of it, and it, it, I will definitely miss it all.
Had a good run, Gary. Thank you. Kayla?
I can't follow that. I was anything. I'm all set. Thank you.
Jill?
Um, just the, the board appointments.
Yeah, I was here earlier today and speaking with Jill. Um, as you know, there's two commissioners that are, one is left and will be leaving. Two new commissioners will be on the board next in November, where they'll be sworn in at that meeting. Of course, there's a ripple effect throughout all the other boards and commissions, planning commission, ZBA, board review, Terror Square, personnel committee, uh, so there's a, um, there'll be some, uh, what they call it when you're moving the chairs around, you know?
Musical chairs, that's it. So, if any of you have any input, uh, recommendations, desires, please call me, text me, or send me an email, because I'm all ears. I walked into City Hall today and immediately got, uh, cornered by Jill, Terry, and Dan, and Sarah, and Patrick just rolled his eyes and said, "Good luck, Mr. Mayor." So, I, next November, hopefully, uh, in the November session, hopefully, we'll have a slate we can, a full slate we can approve. If not, then we may look at, to pull a couple into the December slate. So, if there's any suggestions, I'm welcome to hear them. Is there any other comments from the commissioners or the board here? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Support.
It's been moved in support. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you.